Look over the agenda real quick. Councilmember Hamilton is going to do pledges. We will allow after proclamations, any member of the public that wants to address council. Then we'll have the consent agenda with a few things on it. Any questions about that? We may have some citizen comment on it, number one, under public hearing. I've talked to a few. Yeah, I think Randy's got that taken care of. We have two more public hearings, any questions on those? And resolutions, we've got a couple there, nothing big, we've already gone over those.
That comment, number one, you talked to us about that last time.
Yes, ma'am.
And there weren't any people that, I mean, there weren't any complaints, nobody had even responded, had they?
No, no response.
They still had no.
No. I was curious, I was receiving calls or anything like that.
I talked to one of them Sunday, he said, "You've done a great job getting it all." It's about a Dollar General store that's going to be on Thawdry.
Right.
And they were worried about traffic coming out different ways. And I believe they're going to put a fence that's a little higher to protect it. So I think they feel better.
Okay. I know we were concerned about what it was and if it was.
So, then appointment of hordes.
I have mine. And he's going to be here, so can we say the names I'd like to introduce him? He is so excited. I met with him today. Jonathan Edwards.
And where's he going?
He is, he was so excited, I tell him that just did my heart good. Jonathan Edwards.
Okay. Then we'll have citizen comments on non-agenda items. And then we probably will have an executive session to talk about legal litigation. Is that on hand? Yeah. I'll make sure. Yep, because then you've got to deal with those too. All right, any other questions or comments? I'm going to give you your real cellphone number now.
Now, he's not responding, so I thought maybe he had changed his number.
I'm sorry.
I see he went to.
Talk about number three, August 31st memorial update. Michael and I met with Randy Hamm. There he is. To start discussing a memorial for August 31st. And going through the process, also talking to Lorraine Perriman, who has been involved in quite a few of the art projects. We're going to issue an RFP, request for proposal, to submit out to artists in the country. We have talked about 30 days, but it's actually going to be a 60 day to allow them to submit pieces of art. We've also talked, there are a few different ideas for different places to put the memorial. But we really felt like Memorial Park would probably be the best one. Right there by.
It used to be there.
Used to be Albertson's.
Park Street.
When did you call it?
Southwest.
Buffalo Wall. When I came, it was Buffalo Wall.
And so, talking about budgets and things, Michael said he had $200,000 we could put in. Lorraine said it probably needed to be fuller. There are some citizens that would like to donate. I would like to go out and solicit some of those from them. We talked about setting up a way for citizens to donate through the chamber we were talking about with Renee. Some people just want, even if it's a dollar, they just want to put money in. And so, starting to work on that. We had talked about trying to have it in place on August 31st. But with everything that would need to be done, it's going to be hard to get it done.
We're talking about a statue, right?
Or whatever.
Or some kind of something. Does Dick work on this?
Yes, there's been a lot of conversation with the Public Art Committee on this as well. And I've talked to several cities that have unfortunately been in the same circumstance and how they've handled it as well.
You know, Dick traveled all around in almost every sculpture we've done, you know, except Chris Kopp. But I mean, he had seen somewhere and talked to them. And everyone I've been involved in has been more like in the $400,000 range.
And that's, I'm going to be in El Paso tomorrow to talk to their mayor about their shooting things. But Walmart did theirs, because it was evidently fairly close to Walmart's, Walmart did the whole thing. But we want to make sure that we're sensitive to the victims' families. And we are going to have a committee put together, probably be a couple of council members, some victims' families, some members of the art council, to go through the bid, or through the presentations, to finally bring that item forward. But we're not going to make the 31st of what Lorraine had suggested, which I thought's a great idea. Bring the artist, have a rendering, and do something on the site of where that will be on the anniversary. Because that's going to be a tough day. But have something that shows what's going to happen.
Can we not, can we not go to Walmart and ask if they want to donate some money?
Oh, I'm sure they would. You know, that's one of the things Renee's going to help with, is there's those in the community that I'm sure will donate.
Oh, yeah.
Just correct, Mayor, I think you said that I had $200,000.
I thought you said. I thought you were so generous.
You got it.
Well, we were starting off with a figure to raise money of $200,000. But I think after a lot of discussion, that number is probably going to go higher. Yeah, $400,000 is probably inappropriate.
Also, to expediate it, why can't we just reach out to local artists instead of across the, I mean, that takes a while to.
Well, I think, I can address some of that.
Yes, sir.
There's a couple of things, as I've talked to other arts professionals and also other cities that have had to deal with this. One of the things that was really driven home to me by many, many communities is that, for, especially for the victims and their families, when a memorial has been unveiled on an anniversary like that, it tends to make people feel like, "We've tied a bow on this, we've checked a box, it's all done. Everybody's better." And it tends to not go well. Rather than if you have like an announcement and a groundbreaking, and people get to drive by and they get to see it being constructed, and they get to go and bring their children and things like that, it starts or reinforces a healing process. So, taking a little bit longer is okay. And I'd rather see it done right and slowly than quickly and not well. And so, that was, you know, I even talked to the National Endowment of the Arts and got some feedback from them and that, and some trauma specialists. And that was really the feedback that I got from everybody is, "Take your time, there really is no rush. You know, that day is going to be hard enough, especially the first year." And to be able to make sure that the community feels ownership of it, giving them time to contribute to the process. As for local artists, the RFQ that's going out is going out nationwide. And of course, our local artists are absolutely encouraged to apply. But as in any other job, application, you want the best applicant for the job, no matter the geography. You want the one with the best experience, the one who has handled things like this before, that can do this in a sensitive manner and also stick to budgets and all of the minutia that goes with this. And so, we want to make sure we find the perfect person and not just rely on geography to select.
So, we're talking about, we're trying to find the best quality out there.
Absolutely.
Because one of the things we've talked about is, people suggested different areas. And one of the things that we, people have stressed to me is, it's a place you can go to reflect. You can park and you can walk in there, not a place that you're going to drop by and not be able to stop and reflect. And they said especially for the families, that's easier. And so, we wanted to make sure it was a place that was accessible.
Did we, did Renee go, I was with her and I didn't ask her this question, but they did go ahead and get all the money distributed, right?
They distributed it.
Because I think when people realize that too, they will be more responsive to help do a memorial. You know, since the money that has been raised for the victims has been in their families.
Are they going to mention that, because I've been looking to see that.
They were going to distribute it before the concert, but they felt like they were going to make quite a bit of money off the concert, and it went over very well. Then they said they were going to do that after they got that.
But they will let the public.
Yeah, but that's been a couple of weeks. The concert at the La Hoc Center?
It's been about a month, isn't it?
Well, I mean, it's been, I think it has been distributed, is what I'm saying, because she told me that they were needing to do. I think that's really important, because I've had several people ask me.
And for the public to know and not have to search for answers, it's just out there, they did it.
Norma, can you get Renee?
Randy, how do you envision, because you and I talked about the importance of making sure that the family is involved in the process. How do you envision that working?
Yes, so, we've explored a couple of different opportunities that we've had. One is working with the Ministerial Alliance, who has had a lot of contact with the families. But Renee has really been, you know, meeting with those families one-on-one a lot. And she and I sat and talked about the best way to approach them. And her suggestion was to reach out very softly individually through emails and let them come to us, rather than calling a meeting and having everybody in a room, because they just relive the trauma every time that happens. And so, the family members and the victims that are going to want to be involved will reach out. And the ones that don't will have been given the opportunity to do so. And everybody is in such a different stage of recovery, it's been, it's been very difficult. So, Renee and I wrote a very lengthy email that she sent out individually to each family member and each victim. And we asked them to kind of just get in touch with me through the month of March. And even if it's to just give their blessing, or if it's to give an opinion, or if they want to be involved in the selection of the arts, that they will absolutely have that opportunity.
How has the response been?
It's been very quiet, there's just been a couple so far, but the email's only been out for two weeks.
It's gotten very tough, though.
Yeah, it is. And we don't want to push them, and we don't want to bug them. At the same time, we realize that this is also for the entire community. And at some point, we're just going to have to move forward. But the people that want to be involved will be involved. And it may, there may be a couple of house visits, there may be, you know, a couple of coffees over at Starbucks or something, just to gauge their comfort level. But that's, to me, that's the most important thing, because if there's a family member that comes out and says, "This is not, I don't, you know, I don't get my blessing," then that's a whole other thing that we need to address. So, again, slow and steady, just making sure that everybody is informed at every step of the process, so that we do the best by them that we can and the best for our community as well.
And we're talking about the victims' families, but we're also including the other people that were injured or affected.
Yes, yes. There were, they, the lines of communication went to all of them. And then once, and it's just, it becomes an ever widening circle, because when you really think about it, every single person in our town is a.
Was affected.
And so, we will get community input as well beyond that.
Randy's done a fantastic job.
Will the process, do you think, will it sort of be like the one we did for the Marriott? With all the pieces and the new boat on it? It was really a cool process.
It really is. So, the call will go out, and like the mayor said, it'll be 60 days. And we'll get resumes from all over the country. And it'll be resume, letter of intent, and at least five pieces of previous work. And the selection committee will be able to go online and narrow it down to the three finalists. And then we invite the finalists to create a proposal, hopefully a three-dimensional proposal. And we'll bring those in, they'll present to the committee. We'll probably go one step further and do community input as well and showcase those, so that people can write in and say what they like and what they don't. And then we'll commission the artists from there. And if everything goes to plan, we can do a groundbreaking on the anniversary, which really would be a good step towards the healing process.
Mike, not to get off of that, but what's going on with that amber type alert we had talked about issuing? If something like this ever were to happen again, are we up and ready for that?
Well, we would have to have someone that's certified right now, the only person that's IPOS certified is.
Is that what that is?
IPOS, yeah, it's with the state.
IPOS, okay.
But we do have a mask authentication system, and we used it for Snow Day.
We used it when?
The Snow Day?
Oh.
I'm going to answer the snow if we get out of this here.
All right, any other questions?
One, two.
Randy, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Six, bro.
That's not bad.
I just want to commend the mayor and Mr. Marrero for working together on this. It's not easy, but it's something that the community really needs.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, Chief Kurt, crime, property crime statistics. It makes you wonder whether the speaker's wearing a gun.
Makes me feel sad. Do we have this printed out?
We can get that printed out.
Send it to us.
Last time, we spoke about bond crimes, then we'll talk about persons' crimes last time. Burglaries, when we talk about burglaries and UCR burglaries, you're talking about your residential and your commercial burglaries, but you're not talking about someone that breaks into your car. That falls under a different category, okay? So, last year, we actually had 35 less burglaries than we had the previous year.
Excluding motor vehicles.
Excluding motor vehicles. This is residences and commercial establishments. And I understand these, this type of crime is streaky. By that, what I mean is that when you catch one burglar, you can generally clear up 10 or 15 burglaries, because one burglar is very prolific. So, one, if you, when you get on the trail of a burglary suspect and you can actually catch that person, then it actually means something. And you can clear up several of those things. And while they're in jail, obviously, they're not committing those crimes. So, it's very streaky with those guys. Our clearance rate is 25.9%, the national average is 13.9%.
Chief, can you tell them about the trailer that we bought? Speed trailer?
Well, we get.
Oh, we don't want to talk about this, Mike.
Yeah, we have a license plate reader on a speed trailer.
I thought all police departments had that.
Oh, absolutely not, that is a, it is a very expensive endeavor and it's a.
But then there you start to catch while it's going.
Oh, okay, I got you. It's like a little mouse crap.
Stolen vehicles, now this is a huge issue, 130 more last year than the year before. What we have seen with this is, again, a lot of juveniles that will steal vehicles, joyride and then dump them. Also, people that steal vehicles and then commit other crimes, such as burglaries and that sort of thing. That's where you, that's where we see the increase in this. Also, this is a regional thing, because we see a lot of our stolen vehicles being recovered in the county, in Midland, in Midland County, in Pecos, and I mean, so this is, when I talk about regional, when we have to address crime in a regional nature, this is one of the things we can point to and say, "Absolutely, this is a regional type of crime."
Mike, and when you and I were talking earlier.
Yes.
This is something that every city in the region is also experiencing.
You know, I haven't looked at everyone's stats, but speaking with the other executives of the law enforcement agencies, everyone is feeling this. Only 4.2 of the victims claimed that their vehicles were locked when they were stolen. 28.5% of the victims admitted that they left their keys in the vehicle. And 29% of victims claimed that the keys were not left in the vehicle, but there was no other reason to exist. I mean, so when the vehicle was recovered, it wasn't, it was hotwired, it wasn't, there was no forced entry, anything like that. So, which would lead us to believe that the keys were involved in some manner.
So, what about the other 40%? What did they say?
Well, I mean, no, 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 I mean, in the interest of time, I didn't add all that, but I can give you the entire.
No, I mean, I'm just curious if you say that you, "I left my keys in the car," or "No, I didn't leave my keys in the car," and only 1.7 showed any damage from crime.
Yes.
What's the other options?
Well, the other options are, people will make claims as to, "No, I didn't leave my keys in the car." And then they may have left their keys in the car.
I know.
Or that it was unlocked. There are times when people, there have been auto burglaries, where you have two cars side by side, you own two cars, you have them side by side. And your car, your keys to this car are in this car. And you break into this car and you go back to this car's and take it empty, that sort of thing, yeah.
No, I was just curious, if 29% said, "I left them," and 29% said, "I didn't," what happened, what did the other, what did they?
Probably broke the window.
Yeah, they say, they say we have no idea what happened. And we get that a lot.
Well, that's what I was wondering, did they just say, "I don't know?"
Chief, for a lot of these, you know, you go to 7-Eleven, the guy leaves his truck running.
There are a number of those, but it's not, they're not as many as you would think. Also, we had a number that were stolen, a small number, but a decent number, that was taken from actual car dealerships. Now, understand, that doesn't mean they walked up, hotwired and stole them. That means possibly that they were given out as test drives, and people kept them longer than they did. So, that affects this number.
There were still test drives.
That affects that.
When Michael gets a Corvette.
So, that 130 more, what was last year? I mean, what percentage is that? I don't have any further reference for what 130 is.
130 more, okay. So.
That's going to be hard.
That would have been, it was, the previous year was 369, and last year was 499.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chief, given that almost 60%, where we think that maybe someone had left the keys in the vehicle, that really talks to people are just leaving their keys in the vehicle.
Well.
It becomes an opportunity.
And at the end of this, we'll talk about some of those things, but absolutely. And again, our current rate is 22%, national average is 13.8.
Good job.
So, did you say, are you, do you, of the ones that y'all can identify, are most of them juveniles or young?
It's a mix, I mean, there is, there are a lot of juveniles involved in this, but it's also the people that are going to go out and do burglaries.
Burglaries.
Some, a lot of this, and we'll talk about that in a minute and also, but a lot of this is just crimes of opportunity. It just really is. Some of the folks that we have caught have told us, again, they were doing an auto burglary, they were just trying to get in. They lift the handle on the corridor, right? That's what most of our auto burglaries are, they, if it's unlocked, they're going to get in, if it's locked, they usually leave it unlocked.
So, they just walk along?
Yes, and we see videos of that from ring doorbells constantly. So, what happens is, then they get into the car and someone has left the keys in the console, and they say, "Okay."
Down and open.
Now, we're going. So, it's a crime of opportunity, absolutely.
When you say that we cleared 22%, does that mean that we found out who did it? Or that we recovered 20? Because I would think we recover more vehicles.
No, we recover a lot more than that. 22, the only way you, we say you cleared a case is that.
It's somebody's arrest.
It's either prosecution or you could prosecute it.
Okay.
That's it. There are times when you recover a vehicle, you have the suspect in the vehicle, and for whatever reason, the suspect, I mean, the victim shows up and says, "I don't want to prosecute." And then, yeah, that happens, more than you would think.
That's my son.
More than you would think.
I got that boy.
And then larceny, these went up 533, there's 533 more of these, yes. It was about 2,100 last year, and it went up 533 this year. But these include burglary of motor vehicles, okay? 21.03% of victims of burglary of motor vehicles reported that physical force was used to gain entry in the vehicle, which means almost 80% were unlocked.
Is that just like people stealing tools out of truck vans?
That's a large part of it. That is also those folks just, you know, those criminals just going and grabbing door handles and seeing if they can get in. And if there's anything in there, they put it.
iPad or whatever.
Change.
So, again, to go back to the topic of crime of opportunity, 80%, almost 80% of the people left their cars with them.
That's what the report shows.
Or something like that, where people invited.
So, how many of those did we have last year?
It was, 2,100. I can't give you the exact number.
It's okay.
I mean, I can find it, but it's.
No, it's okay. I just don't know if 533 is 10% more or 50% more.
So, that does include when they take the stuff out of the bed of a truck?
But we're talking about larcenies here, so that's all your thefts. I mean, that's just not the burglary of motor vehicles. That's a, that's a large portion of it, but that's your shoplifters, that's, you know, someone that comes and steals your lawnmower from your front yard while you went in to get a drink. Any of those things, someone that, any of those things are your larcenies.
I know you're going to mow your yard, but that's just.
Outside.
Something like a pickpocket or something like that?
That would be theft on a person, but yes, that would also.
Do they do that?
Yes.
Do they still do that?
Every now and then.
They do it every day.
They're doing it in New Orleans.
Our clearance rate is 29.17%, the national average is 18.9. So, it says solution, but it should say possible solutions, because who knows what the solution is, right? This is our, this is what we're swinging at. So, community education, this is, I feel this is one of my biggest failings, is that we haven't been out in the community enough on, in the media and on social media, telling people, "Lock your cars, take your keys out of your car, take your purse out of your car, take your gun out of your car," because that happens a bunch, you know, guns get stolen in our cars around here. Those type of things, it's what a lot of us would call common sense. We need to be reinforcing that with our citizens.
Do we have plans to do that?
Yes. Moving forward, we're doing all of this.
Okay. Is there, isn't there a fine if you leave your vehicle running and run into the store or something? I've heard people say that.
If your vehicle, with remote start, that changes.
I have to tell my car.
The keys actually have to be in the ignition for that to be.
Does remote start, they're going to die if locked in a vehicle?
Target hardening, what we talk about with that is, we have some SEP-10 people that are.
SEP what?
SEP-10, it's an acronym. But basically, what it is, is folks that we send out into the community, it goes to business, and we tell them, "Look, if you put lights here and cameras here, and you trim this bush, and you do X, Y, and Z, it'll make, it'll make your establishment much harder to be a victim of crime."
Is that the security assessment that we're talking about?
Yes, absolutely, we've.
Is that what that stands for?
I don't know what it stands for. That's what it is, right?
Crime prevention.
And that's what it is, they go out and they get a national certification, these four guys have national certification, and they go out to different organizations, different businesses, and tell them, "This is what you need to do to harden you, harden your target, to make you less susceptible to crime."
Do the businesses have to ask for that, or do you just routinely kind of?
Well, both, I mean, if someone asks, we'll put them on the list. But we're also, if we don't have a list, if we've exhausted our list, we'll start code calling, start knocking on doors. Our priority right now is apartment complexes, because that is where you're seeing a lot of your auto burglaries and things like that. So, lighting and video cameras and that sort of thing are really huge issues with those types of establishments. So, that's our priority, apartments, motels, hotels, but we go out to any business, we'll go out to residences, so.
We utilize them before we began working downtown.
Yes.
So, they, those guys went through and did a real thorough job of looking at areas that didn't have enough lighting. So, they, those guys went through and did a real thorough job of looking at areas that didn't have enough lighting, that, you know, you had high brush where someone could hide. And we're using that information as we design lighting and other improvements.
Yes. We've, let's see, I know we've ordered those guys to do at least one a week. So, that's our goal, is one a week.
So, what is the unit gonna be called?
They're part of, this is Steve Lusware and Michael Hamilton, these are two of the guys that are doing it, so...
It's my cousin. I know Officer Hamilton, he's a good guy.
I have to applaud you guys for even finding anybody with security cameras, because every time they show one on TV, I don't even know how you tell, it looks like a blob to me.
A lot of times.
I mean, really? So, I think that's fantastic that you know what you're working for.
Cooperative investigations, what we're talking about there is all the entities working together. And we've really, really stepped it up, we've made tremendous strides in that area. And what I mean by that is the Ector County Sheriff's Office partnering with those guys, the Midland Police Department, the Midland County Sheriff's Office partnering with those folks and those federal partners that we have. We've really, really stepped that up, and that's already paying dividends. As we move forward, I think that's gonna be a huge one. Our LAP program is the lethality assessment program. What this is, is every time we go to a domestic violence call and we have a victim, we will ask that victim a set list of questions. And each question has a number value assigned to it. Once we pass a certain threshold, we immediately call the crisis center. And the crisis center will immediately send out a social worker and try to find, if nothing else, at least remove the victim from the situation while we're pursuing charges and that sort of thing. So, if nothing else, we want the victim to make sure they understand that there's an option besides staying in a dis...
How many of them refuse that?
This is just now starting, this is just about the start.
That's good, that's a good...
You know, I would think that we're gonna have a significant number that refuse that. But if you have ten percent that take you up on it, I mean, you're doing well.
Yes, sir.
Our gun crime initiative, we did this a few years back and it was really successful. Basically, what we are focusing on this are those offenders who have a felony record and then are caught with it in possession of a firearm. We're targeting those individuals that are in possession of narcotics and in possession of a firearm, and those individuals that steal firearms in vast numbers and then try to resell those, and gang members that are in possession of firearms. This is important because this is where we have partnered seriously with our federal partners. We have taken, the AUSA has decided this is a very important project for her in...
AUSA?
The Assistant U.S. Attorney in Midland. So, this is a, something that we have moved forward with, with all the federal agencies, with the Midland Police Department and with the Ector County Sheriff's Office. We are targeting those individuals, particularly dope dealers that we, most dope dealers are carrying guns, so we have targeted those guys. Gang members often carry guns, so we are targeting those guys.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
A lot of times when I hear about this targeting crime and gangs and things like that, I don't hear nothing about cartel members. And I think it's a common knowledge around here that there are, there's a lot of cartel activity. Are we targeting any of that?
I would say that that conversation is probably not something we would need to have in this segment.
In open form. I got you. Fair enough.
Yes.
So, when you say it's a gun crime initiative, you use the gun with drugs and make it a federal charge?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, we see the value of that because the cases move so much quicker on the federal side, and penalties generally tend to be stiff.
Word gets on the street.
Yes. DDEX, DDEX is an initiative, and it's an intelligence-driven initiative that actually shows that your hotspots in town for traffic accidents have a correlation with crime. And here's the reason, because if you look at your traffic hotspots, that's where all your people are going. So, that's where you're, so you're looking at Forty Second and Parkway, you're looking at by the West Side Walmart, you're looking at Thirty First and Andrews Highway, those types of areas, those are those hotspots right now. You flood the area with officers working traffic and just the mere presence tends to bring down crime in those areas. So, we've been doing that for a while. We've actually affected the West Side Walmart hotspot. We've actually, you can throw the heat map up and you can see the reduction there. Gun Crime Intel Center, this is something that we've been, that's been on the radar for a while now, and we just got to go ahead to move forward. What this is, is we will be partnering with ATF and creating a NIBIN Center, which is National Integrated Ballistic Imaging Network. What happens is we, every shell casing that we recover in the city of Odessa goes into this system. Every gun leaves a distinctive mark on a shell casing. Okay, the shell casings get loaded into the system, digital images get sent to a correlation center that is owned by ATF. They promise they'll have a response to us within thirty-six hours. And we'll start, basically, it is a database very similar to AFIS, which is the fingerprint database. So, you start building a history on this gun. We've done some of this already where we've had to take these, to, where we've had to take these casings to other locations, Lowbook or Amarillo, and dump them into their system. And we've actually got hits where guns were, that were used in Odessa and crimes were also used in the Dallas-Fort Worth area on crimes. So, there is a correlation. So, the idea behind this is that we get it up and running, we make sure it's right for us, we expand it to the Ector County Sheriff's Office, Midland County Sheriff's Office, the Midland Police Department, allow them to do the same thing, because guns travel, crime is regional. And then we also allow those smaller agencies outside of Midland-Odessa, the Cranes, the Andrews, the Monahams to... Because it's simply bringing their shell casings and we put them into the system, and it, we gather the intel.
Plus, if you catch one guy with his gun, then all of a sudden...
Yes. Oh, yeah, if you have a gun and you, say you use, or you picked up shell casings that had several different shootings, and then you catch the guy with the gun, he's got a lot of explaining to do about all this other stuff, right?
So, Chief, when I talked about this before, this is really great for the region.
Yes.
Because every law enforcement agency in the area will have access.
Yes.
It's a great way to partner with the local agencies.
All right, now, here's the bad part, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. Here's the good part, we're paying for it with grants and seizure funds. I know, Sandy. It is about five to six months away from going live.
That's fantastic. So, Kenny would have to come up with that much too?
No, 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 this is one, this is one system. And the last is ILP, which is Intelligent Lead Policing. And basically, that is hotspot policing, that is prolific offender policing. I think we all understand that six percent of our population commits eighty to ninety percent of the crime and causes eighty to ninety percent of the issues in any city. So, basically, what we have to do is identify that, identify those subjects, identify where crime is happening, and respond to that. We all know we're shorthanded, everybody in this area is shorthanded, can't use it as an excuse. It is what it is, we move forward, right? So, work smarter rather than harder, because we don't have the resources to work harder. So, we have, we have spent some money on that initiative with software and that sort of thing. So, that's been very beneficial. Each one of these things, if at later time, we could break down any particular item here and come back and give you a much more detailed briefing on each thing, if you would like, I mean, that's fine.
I appreciate the effort and the forethought, so...
And this is, just to show you the crime numbers, this is the seven-year breakdown. So, you see where thirteen was. So, after fifteen, we had a, we started a decline, and it continued last year, and it had an uptick this year. However, even with the uptick this year, that is still the best, the third best.
That's y'all's hard work.
That's, and those are UCR numbers. I know some people like UCR a lot more than I do.
Chief, is this partly, do you believe that, I know a lot of transient-type people, but is this partly due because we're short-staffed? I mean, you know, we're, you're short of people, or do you feel like that plays into these statistics?
No, that has to play into it, but again, I mean, we've been short for several years now. So, if that is what it is, then you can't...
No, 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 I get that, but I mean, I'm just trying, you know, some things you can throw money at and fix. I was just curious if, you know, if, you know, back, what you're saying is we were short-staffed in twenty-seventeen and eighteen as well?
Yes, we were.
So, okay.
Part of that population number, we all know that number's not right.
Well, that, this number that we use is what the Texas Department of Public Safety crime stats use. So, we don't, we don't try to make up our own number, we don't, this is what they use.
But we all know that number is not right.
Well...
Yeah, I know, yeah, exactly.
It is what it is.
Yeah, if that number was a hundred and sixty thousand, then the rate per hundred thousand is less.
Now, when we talk about, going back to these property crimes and crimes of opportunity, understand that things have changed around here with the oil boom, right? We have so many oilfield trucks running around with high-dollar equipment on the back of that, and that is just, people, you know, you have burglars and criminals that see that and that just whets their appetite, right? Now, that is not by any means or any stretch of imagination a slam in the oilfield. We know what, we know what the oil industry has done for this town. And so, that is absolutely not. But again, when you have predators, they will take opportunities that they see.
Yep.
Chief, beyond human resources?
Yes.
And kind of moving forward as you initiate this, these initiatives and others, are there other things, other resources, that you think you need to have in order for you guys to be more effective at what you're doing?
Well, you know...
That's what I was kind of asking is...
As far as crime goes, to free up, to free up resources, we've talked about some other things. We've talked about, you know, mental health services and things like that in the city and county. And you would, you know, to me, it's amazing that we don't have a state facility in Midland-Odessa with the population here. You would think we would. I mean, what happens now when we have someone that has to go to a mental health facility is we, it's either a trip to Midland and if they're full, or they won't take the patient for whatever reason, it's San Angelo or Abilene. So, when you have an officer that has to do that, that's, you know, five hours for that officer off the street. You think two hours there, an hour at the facility, and then two hours back. So, that was the number one thing that you and the Sheriff Department came up with? Yes, that's a, that's a huge issue, that's a huge issue.
Have you got any feedback on the, on the pay increase that we voted on with you guys? Are they pretty happy?
No, they are, they absolutely are. But as you turn around, then Midland increases their pay, and then, you know, it's, it's... Yeah, Midland Hospital District.
So, how does pay please?
I was gonna ask you a question, so, last year and the year before, we had an initiative, and I know you guys are still continuing, it's just a matter of finding the time. But we were going into neighborhoods where we were having essentially like a block park. That now has been turned into a partnership with the code enforcement staff.
Right.
And that seems to be working phenomenally well. And you guys are always there at those facilities, at those block parks.
Yes, absolutely. And we will, and that's, you know, that is one of our initiatives. And I can't really help tell you guys, the term I use, tell my guys about, you know, getting out of their vehicles, because it wouldn't be appropriate here. But I think it's important for police officers to get out of their vehicles and talk to the people in communities that they serve, because no one knows those communities better than the people that live there, right? If you want to know where the crime's happening, who's doing the crime in a neighborhood, you have to talk to the people in that neighborhood. You have to.
That's true.
And there's, I mean, and most people in this town are, I mean, people are so friendly, they'll offer you some barbecue, you know? I mean, so, what's wrong with that?
Oh, I'm leaving with a plate. Can I come on a ride along with y'all?
What was the statistic, is most of the, six percent caused most of the crime?
Yeah, eighty percent of the crime, and there are various studies that will show you that, there's different, the number differs. You know, eight percent causes eighty, but, I mean, that's a small number of your citizens actually create the vast majority of the issues in your town.
Is that what makes the videos that Peggy can't identify someone easier, because it's repeat offenders?
Because it's repeat offenders.
Well, you know, they'll say, crime stoppers will say, "If you've seen this," and I'm going, "What?" You know, and stomping it and looking at it.
Chief, thank you for everything they do.
And again, if y'all want to, any of those initiatives that we have working, if y'all want those broken down more, we can absolutely do that.
Yeah, you know, Mr. Hamilton mentioned ride along, but that's always available to any member of the...
That is available, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
I might take you up on that, Chief. I did a ride along in a long time. Okay. Friday and Saturday night?
Friday and Saturday night, it's the overnight shift.
I just might do that, okay?
I do have to brag on PD, they did a joint out on I-20 DPS. They had about six DPS and six of our guys, and in two hours, they wrote a hundred and twenty tickets.
Yay.
Chief, y'all slacking, man.
That's a bunch of tickets.
That's a lot of tickets.
I do want to throw one caveat out there also. There was, you know, some of the best work that we do, no one ever hears about. Because some of the best work we do, we file federally, and the federal system really doesn't like us talking about those things until after things are adjudicated. So, those don't hit the media, and you guys don't hear about that sometimes.
But then in the newspaper.
Thank y'all for everything you do.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We've got twelve minutes.